All right, so, welcome everyone. So tonight, we're gonna sum up the process that went through since, pretty much, we started December, and then we had all our meetings over the months, and now we're gonna do our final presentation before the budget vote, May 20th. I want to once again thank our Finance Committee, Dave LaBeau, a community member, and Andrew Gilligan, and then our Board members Nikki and Dawn for participating in all of those meetings. Appreciate their input. So if we can start the first slide. So just a budget summary here, and then we'll go through the pieces of the revenue and the expenses and what we're looking at. So, proposed budget, $36.317 million, that's a 2.51% increase. That does include our bus purchases, we're getting two buses, a diesel and a gas bus. Small capital project. Our contractual obligations, utility and field costs, and health insurance premiums. This was brought down significantly, we were over 4% originally. We did have 12 reductions in staff for this budget to balance the budget, which I'll discuss later. New York State aid, we still don't have the government, you know, we don't have a budget yet from the state, so it's still late, but we went off the executive budgets numbers, and since we aren't on the foundation aid formula, we get the minimum of 2%, so we're pretty confident that we're gonna get that money. And I'll talk about state aid, we did have a drop, significant drop from last year, and I'll go through that on the next slides. Tax cap levy, so this is what we can go with, we need 50% of one vote. To pass, it's 3.66%, and this year, we are actually going, some years we go under, we try to balance it out. I think we've averaged about 2% over the last 13 years I've been here, but we are recommending going to 3.66%. We're facing difficult challenges, and also, this does include our new capital projects in that, that was, the voters approved, so we wanted to go up to include that amount. Next slide, please. Three-part budget. This is, you know, all districts need to show this, and so you can see 73% is really spent on teaching, transportation, and the extracurriculars for the kids. 13% in administrative and 14% in capital. If you look at all the, pretty much, all the districts across the street, this is really, and it should be, 73% or 74, you know, in the 70s is pretty standard, and, you know, spending the money on the students. So now the highlights, so as we discussed at last meeting, we went through a little more in-depth on state aid and all the numbers, but big challenge facing the district now is our state aid, you can see, dropped 431,000. So even though our money for running our operations, the foundation aid went up 2%, which was, you know, a definite great help. Our reimbursable aids for BOSEs and transportation dropped significantly. That's what's attributing to this decrease. So our BOSEs aid, every, you know, we spend money one year, we get reimbursed the next, we used to get about 50% back for the longest time. It dropped to 36.6%, so we lost a significant revenue stream there. And then our transportation, so our money when we buy our transportation department, our buses, we used to get, you know, between 28% to 32%, now we're at 19%. And as I discussed earlier, the big reason for these decreases is our property revaluation, so property values went up significantly in Chatham. So the state looks at those numbers compared to the rest of the state, and they say we're a much wealthier district, so they're giving us much less aid. You know, the assumption is, oh, the taxpayer can make up that burden, but the issue is when you're, you know, we have 40% free and reduced, and the other issue is, my house might have doubled, but, you know, my taxes didn't go down double, so it's not like you can just keep taxing. So that makes it, that's what's making it challenging here for the foreseeable future. And then on other revenue, this includes when we have tuition students, this is some of the rebates we were getting for prescription and health insurance. We had some good years. And we took the health insurance rebate out because the consortium was running a deficit, and our premiums went up, so we're not getting those rebates any longer. We did have a little bit of offset with interest income, but we were careful. Our interest, you know, interest rates increased significantly the last two years, but there is discussion with the Fed, you know, to bring rates down again, so that has a big variance in our revenue. Medicaid was flat. This is for Medicaid-eligible IEP students that get services. We get money back on that, that's another question mark with the Fed, where that's gonna go in the future. So you can see that 67,000, we kept flat. The taxes, we talked about, that's going up to the cap at 3.66. We appropriate money for the, for our contingencies that are built in the budget, so we appropriate that money for the next year to keep the levy down, so that's 1.341 million. But the big change here, which we haven't done, we've been fortunate not to use the unassigned fund balance, so we have our reserves, and they are, they are to be used for difficult times, and we're gonna start using them. So you can see, we went from 91,000 last year to 573,000, so a $482,000 increase. And we discussed this numerous times with our reserve plan, that's, you know, difficult times we use reserves, but we also have to watch going forward on the future, you can only use those so long, otherwise you create a massive deficit in your budget. So, for example, next year, we're gonna start 573,000, using that number to balance our budget. And these are all the budget lines that we went through the last three months. We went through each area, so general support, the Board of Education, District Office, Business Office. This is also our operations and maintenance. So what we did on a lot of these code lines were really just salary increases, and we actually took about 5% out of all supply codes, you know, because it's a difficult, challenging year. The one thing you could say is, why is it 3.18% with everything being kind of held flat? And really, there was a reallocation of a BOSEs code for our technology, we have a technology person through BOSEs, that's about $80,000, that helps in our IT department. That was in the instructional code last, this current year, and BOSE sometimes moves people to different codes, so they moved it to the general support. So if you wanted to compare last year to this year, and you took that out, the general support would have only gone up about 1.1%. Instruction, that's our pre-K to grade 12. Teacher salaries, teacher assistants, aides, principals. It's all the textbooks, all the supplies, special education, guidance, technology. You can see, that's 0.84%. We were in the 4% range when we started, and this is including the 12 positions that we eliminated in our district to make that only be 0.84% to balance our budget. Transportation went up 4.81. This includes two runs, we took out our morning and afternoon runs for the district runs, we actually took two runs out and saved 70,000. The reason for this increase is we had some special education students that needed one-to-one aides on the buses, and we've had some out-of-district runs that needed to be added, so that was the reason for the 4.81% increase. But it would have been more if we didn't take, consolidate two runs. We have a study this summer with a consultant to really look at every single run in the district to see what we can do. Employee benefits, it's hit Chatham, it hit every district here, and it hit, you know, my counterparts that I know in Western New York, same thing, health insurance has gone up significantly. This is one of the biggest increases we've had, almost 15%, and it's based on usage, so that was a major driver in our budget this year, that increased 478,000. This also includes our retirement costs that we pay. We were fortunate because we had a good stock market the last few years, so that was pretty flat, but that is gonna be a concern going for, you know, the next couple of years going forward. That service, we try to match our revenue and expenses when we do a capital project. And you can see, it's negative 1.14%. So one of our capital projects debt fell off, and we did an interest-only payment on our new project, and we're trying to match the aid the following year to match the expense. Then inter-fund transfers, that's our cafeteria library and our capital fund for our two buses and $100,000 capital project. One, you know, one thing with the cafeteria, we qualify for free meals for everyone, so we, we've used to have about 150,000 deficit when I started here, now we're getting close to break even, we have great participation. That's another question mark going forward, if we're gonna continue to get those, that money paid by the state. So total expenses, 2.51, that matches our revenues, about $889,000 increase. So these are the reductions we discussed over the last few meetings. We spent, you know, Andrew and myself, and we really worked with the principals on all of these over the, from January on, because we knew it was gonna be a difficult year. And if you read, you know, look at all of these, I won't go through everything, but if you look at the positions, everything is really declining enrollment. So as our enrollments declined over the last, you know, six, seven, actually 12 years I've been here, we've had a steady decrease in enrollment. We, we've been able to take some of these positions out, really not impacting the students. So we can see, two elementary teachers declining enrollment, a teacher assistant and aide, because we reduced those classrooms at the middle school, two teaching assistants and an aide. Middle school teacher AIS due to declining enrollment at the high school, social studies teacher retiring, so we, same thing, declining enrollment, we can utilize our current staff. High school, special ed teachers retiring, and we can combine the middle school and high school life skills because of the enrollments have declined, so they can be combined. Teaching assistant is eliminated due to the combination of those two classes. Teacher aide at the high school, we can share the responsibilities. And then we looked at the BOSEs, we looked, you know, pretty much at all the BOSEs costs. And one of the main reasons too is our aide went from 50% to 36%, so we're not getting as much aide on that. So BOSEs network engineer from 1 to 0.6. We reduced the BOSEs data analyst hours, the health and safety was here once a week, we're probably gonna go maybe once a month. We had Terry come onboard, and he did a great job of really looking over our software and our curriculum tools that we're using, and what we're using and what we're not, and what we can do in-house. Same with the professional development that, you know, he can bring to the, he brings to the district, so we eliminated those costs. I talked about the two in-house bus runs due to declining enrollment, because we can fit the numbers work on the buses. Supply costs across the board, 5%, we reduced some field costs. So we actually took out about 945,000 in our budget. So the 945,000 coming out, and using a little over half a million in our unassigned fund balance, our reserves, is really what balanced us this year. $100,000 capital project, so we try to do projects that can get approved by the state quickly and done in one year, because then we get 50% back on aide the next year, and we've been doing this, I think I put this in place about eight years ago or seven years ago. Take advantage of that, so we can do, we can continue to do small projects around the district. So the bus garage, the diesel fuel tank is very small, and the heating, just the heating oil tank out there is much larger, so we're gonna reconfigure those, because we're having deliveries of diesel fuel all the time to help manage that process. Net result, as I said, 36.317 million, 2.51% increase. Tax cap levy, 3.66, we're proposing to go to that levy this year. We have one proposition that's on the budget, and then we have an election will take place to fill the two seats, so pleased to see we had two candidates apply. Andrew Gilligan and Steve Michalek are on the ballot. Where and when, so at the elementary school, Tuesday, May 20th, from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM is when the vote will take place. And then we have on our budget information page on the website, we have the newsletter that went out or is going out. We'll have a budget news mailer that also will be going out, and then any questions, we have on the website, budget@chatham.k12.ny.us. So that's the budget hearing, do I have any questions? All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So this concludes our budget hearing, that meeting is adjourned. And now we are going to call the board meeting into order, and we're gonna begin with our pledge of allegiance. The mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with the knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed, and contribute in their future educational career and community endeavors. May I have an approval of the present agenda? Does anyone have any questions? All in favor? Okay, we're gonna move into our public comment section, segment. Anyone here would like to speak, please feel free to come up, sign in.
Hi, everyone, good evening. I'm here to talk about the indoor air quality monitoring event that was done by the Department of Health through the School Environment Health Program. This was in response to, I'm not the first one to have concerns, but my concerns about mold in the high school building. That's how it was proposed, that this was an effort to figure that out. So when you look at the letter for the report that was sent to you, Mr. Court, it says, "This work was performed as a pilot project to develop an indoor air quality monitoring procedure for schools." And then if you go into the scope of work, it says, "The goal of this pilot program is to establish a procedure that schools can use to independently monitor and evaluate their indoor air quality using low-cost sensors." So like, that's all fine and good, that sounds great, but I'm not sure how this is supposed to figure out the mold situation. And in fact, it says on page four that the School Environmental Health Program does not recommend or provide mold testing. So I'm not really sure how we're supposed to feel better about that when you reached out to people who, not only they don't provide that as a service, but they don't even recommend it. So that doesn't really make me feel better about it. On page three, they talk about the, essentially, the scope of work in the introduction, and it says that data was collected at one-minute intervals for the parameters of temperature, carbon dioxide, relative humidity, and particulate matter throughout an occupied school week. So through the report, you see the data results for the temperature, the carbon dioxide, and the relative humidity, but there's no data for the particulate matter. So I'm not sure why that was left out of the report. However, if you go to, you know that it's done, you know, they did the testing. On page 19, they talk about "Dilos laser particle counters were deployed in all monitored classrooms. These, these data were evaluated by the School Environmental Health Program." And then it says, "The data was not used to generate the indoor air quality parameter grades for Chatham High School." So it was omitted for some reason. So they looked at it, and they know about the data, but they did not give us the data. And the only thing that they say is, "Based on the data we collected, we can confirm that the particle count increases within classrooms as occupancy increases." Okay, so what was the number to start with? Was it like a massive number, and then it got even larger with occupancy? Or, you know, it doesn't give us anything on that. So I would like to request that we get those, those data points, I'm pretty sure that's public information, and we should be able to have that. And then, it's interesting, because then the next thing that goes to under that on page 19 is ventilation rate. And it says, "As part of the Indoor Air Quality Monitoring Tool Pilot Program, ventilation rate was also evaluated in all monitored classrooms." So ventilation rate wasn't even mentioned in, like, the scope of work. So all of a sudden, it just like appears, they decided to do that. So it makes me wonder if there was something with a particulate matter that prompted them to want to look at the ventilation rate. So, anyway. It also, on page 22, they go to wrap it up, and they say that "Good indoor air quality requires proper ventilation and filtration of particles from the air, as well as effective administrative controls and space configuration. The recommendations listed below under 'low-cost administrative and cleanliness controls to improve indoor air quality' are the results of the School Environmental Health Program's staff of observations, data collected, and the review of the 2021 Building Condition Survey." So you go to their recommendations, and it all has to do with, like, dust and vacuums and keeping things clean, and so it really makes me think that there was there was particulate matter that was concerning, and I'm not sure why we weren't given that. I also want to point out that on the letterhead here, that was on the report, it seems like this letter was sent in February, because it says May 2nd for the date. However, if you read the letter and you go to the last paragraph, it says, "We will reach out to you in April 2025 to schedule additional indoor air monitoring during the spring season per your request." So I'm not sure how that works. They're writing a letter to you in May, and they're referencing you'll reach out to you in April, unless we're traveling back in time. So, okay, so I'm gonna wrap it up, because time is up. I would just like to say one last thing really quick, and this will be it, and I will be out of here. But it also says in the report, on page 21, this is just the stamp of New York State, "There are no state or federal standards for mold in buildings. Mold testing is often more expensive than simply cleaning and/or repairing the water problems or moist material that allowed mold to grow in the first place. Mold levels vary widely depending on location, weather, and time of day. Knowing the types of mold present does not alter the guidance for cleaning it. Therefore, the New York State Department of Health does not recommend mold testing, nor is it required by any regulatory agency in New York." So it just feels like this was just kind of put out there to, like, make people feel better, but it doesn't really seem like a real effort was made, and that's disappointing, so. Oh, good. Okay, I mean, I guess my question would be more to you, guys, as the leaders of the ship, as to why you're reaching out to people who don't even recommend.
The Health Department has, as a public identity, is our jurisdiction for all health matters. We went to them, and this was what they did. So my recommendation to you is to email schoolenvironmental.health@health.nyork.com.
Okay, that sounds like a bit of a cop-out, but thank you so much. Have a good night, everyone. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, so we're gonna move on to board member comment. Does anyone have anything that would like to say today?
This past week, I went to the high school music concert. And the spring concert, it was so, it was wonderful. There was so much energy on that stage from our three music teachers, and they passed that energy right down to our students. Each group was just outstanding, I was very proud sitting there of our kids and our teachers. Best energy from those three ladies.
I'm sorry I missed it, I was really sad, I had something going on home, but they're sending me a videotape of the concert, I look forward to seeing it.
Okay, I have one thing to say. Rachel is going to be wrapping things up. She was a temporary appointment, she was finishing out someone else's term. And so when we have our elections next week, I thought this was your last, yeah, two weeks, I thought this was your last board meeting. Because I was in the middle of getting dinner ready, well. So I've got the card, and I've got the flowers, so thank you. We have your number, you'll be tapped for, oh yeah, you will be called, you will be called. So thank you, Rachel, we really, truly appreciate everything that you've done for us. Policy, yes. Okay, and we have a lot of policy tonight, too, so it ain't over yet. Yes. Okay, so we'll move on to our student representative's report session.
I also wanted to give a little shout-out to the high school spring concert that they had. I also went, and it was amazing, as always. And then there's also a spring concert at the middle school this Wednesday, so I'm assuming that will be equally as good. Student Government went to the same Questar Leadership Workshop that we've been going to for, I think it was our fifth workshop, and this was like the final one, so we got to showcase everything that we've been doing around the school this year. So it was really cool that we got to present to all of our neighboring school districts about that. And there were a few key speakers that were there that presented to us, and they were really good. They had some really good things to say, kind of just about leadership and about making your school a better place, and I, I know it motivated me. And we also, there was a student panel, and our representative was Ellery Pierce, who's a junior, and she did a great job speaking on that. And then for spring sports, the baseball senior night was a few days ago, I'm not sure the exact date of that, but, and then I know the softball senior night is coming up soon, I also don't know the date of that, but, and then the track senior night, I believe, is tonight at this track meet that's going on. AP testing is this week, I know they had AP Bio yesterday, so kids are kind of dragging fluorescent school day after taking a three-hour test. And then the sophomore class is having a fundraiser on May 20th, the same day as the budget vote. And they're doing a hot sub-sale, and you can either preorder online, or you can walk in, but that is on a first-come, first-served basis. So if anyone's going to vote, I highly suggest to get a sub on your way there. I think so, yeah. Yeah, I have a flyer I can send to you guys. And then, to answer your question from last time, we are starting the process of looking for a board representative for next year, or a student representative. The application is currently open, I've been trying to talk to a few people, I know there's a couple of people that are interested. And I believe that we're going to go through the interview process. I think it's around the end of May or early June, I can't remember the exact date, but we will have that soon for you. And then this Thursday and next Wednesday, the eighth graders are coming to the high school to do a tour, so we'll be in here for a little bit, answering questions, we'll have them go out and walk around the school to see it, and then we switch. And that's something the high school is gonna help out with, which I know I always enjoy doing. Prom is this Friday, which people are super excited for. And then there's a lot of graduation planning going on right now. May is a busy month for seniors, and there's a lot of events happening that we're super excited about. And then, I forgot capstone was so close, and I didn't put anything on here about it, but I realized you don't have another meeting before then. So, I know I said about general time, it's May 16th, there are three windows of time slots, there's 11:15, 12:30, and 1:45. I know that you have some questions about that, I can answer those. But then I also, Mr. Reed shared with me a very special thing right here, and this is the class flag of 1925, so it's this 100-year anniversary coming up.
That's really neat. Right? See, recycle. Where could we put that?
Yes, so the class of 1975 is coming on Friday to open up their time capsule. So they've got their, I'd be curious to see what's in there, and they're also invited to our graduation, because the class of, the 50-year class is always invited to the class graduation. So, yeah, it's been a very busy time around the school right now, but I can imagine that the next report will be even busier, because it's only early night, but, yeah, that's what I have for you all.
That's great, so if a board member wanted to sit in on a capstone, who should we reach out to to organize? Because, you know, you can't just walk in, you have to kind of, they have to figure out where you need to be.
Were you all invited?
I don't, it's kind of an openness, yes, yes.
So, so Ashley Keegan and I, and I, do we have anyone from that group? So I believe as a board member, there's actually a training that goes to be a scorer. So like, I'm getting trained on Thursday, but I believe board members can just sit and observe, but you won't be scoring.
Right.
I can.
That's the way we did it that last time.
Okay, so I can ask Ashley to just reach out to everyone again, just with that information again? But I believe you're all invited, did you get anybody invited here? Okay, I thought so. So you're just, you won't be scoring, you'll just be observing and listening and.
We need to coordinate, though, where we'll be.
So let, yeah, let me have her resend that out, just so you know.
But she's not busy enough, but.
And I'll go back and.
So board members, if you're planning, even thinking about it, reach out to her sooner rather than later, so that she can add you to the schedule.
Yeah, she'll assign you to a classroom. Yeah, she'll assign you to a classroom.
I can imagine she's also watching the meeting right now. So she's probably listening on this until, have it delivered in a couple minutes.
You're probably right.
I will make sure you guys get that, too. So the sub flyer and. Okay, got it.
So did that mean that we'll have dinner at our next board meeting? We have subs?
Well, it's a, so it's for sale before the board meeting? So you could stop by later and grab it?
Yeah, because there is a sign that says no food and drink in the library.
Yeah, you might have to eat it before because they're messy subs. There, I know there are meatballs and sausage. Might be hard to eat during your meeting.
No, it might not be a good idea.
I'll have meatballs flying all over the place if I need anything.
We'll figure it out. Since I love our local history and I wasn't aware of this flag thing. Did you find anything else, Mr. Wheat? Or was it just a singular flag?
I was going to actually during my, have you share what you have found? Because it's pretty amazing.
No, it wasn't my, it wasn't my plan to do that, but since he brought it up.
So I've obviously been spending some time trying to get to know the district and its traditions. And last summer, Sabrina Williams, the building secretary, and some other folks who are here over the summer spent some time in one of the storage cabinets and let me know that that's where the time capsules are stored. We have a continuous record of time capsules back to the class of 1972. And then the only one before that that we've been able to find is 1936. But we have a bin of Arbor Day trowels that seems to be sequential back into the early 1900s. And we have banners back till at least 1921 as well. Each class, at one time, there was a tradition of making a small plaque displaying the class flower and the class motto and colors on a little picture. And so when the class of 75 comes on Friday, we're going to be able to share with them their little plaque that they made, open up their time capsule. And I did, I did, I will, and then I did open it just enough to see that there was something inside it because I've known a lot of 18-year-olds. But there is, there is something inside there and I don't know what it is yet. So I'm excited to see it. We also, obviously, we have all of the graduation records. One thing that stood out to me from those is their graduation from 1922, where one Mary E. Dartis graduated from Chatham High School for going on to be a benefactor of the district for a long time. So there's a lot of rich tradition here. And these things like opening the time capsule and displaying the flag. Really interested in helping the students here understand that they're coming from a place of deep support and tradition. And wherever they go in the world after this, they're coming from a remarkable place and we want them to take that with them.
And your plan is to do this every year, to open a time capsule every year with that class, correct?
Yeah, just adding on to the tradition that the class who graduated 50 years ago gets invited to graduation. We thought it would be a nice kind of add-on to that tradition to open up that 50-year time capsule. And when we get to 2036, we'll open that 1936 time capsule as well on the 100-year anniversary.
And it was quite fascinating because every time capsule he showed them to me, every time capsule is different. Some are wrapped in paper, some are wrapped in tubing, right? And they're all different sizes and shapes. And it's really interesting how they did it. And they're all, they're not buried, right? They're kept in a, on a shelf, really, right, in a closet. Pretty neat.
It's, it's a wonderful set of.
And going forward, right, we're continuing the time capsule tradition? And I know, and you're using something a little bit more.
The tradition is that the seniors put their time capsule together on Arbor Day is when they seal it. So we kind of wanted to give them a chance to see those classes opened here a little bit before Arbor Day to kind of seed some ideas so that they can, you know, think about 50 years from now. Hopefully, we're able to keep this tradition alive.
And not use paper maybe to wrap it, right? Preserve it a little longer.
So we're gonna, you're gonna invite them to open their, the 1975 before Arbor Day?
So we have 10 or 13, somewhere between 10 and 13 representatives of the class of 1975 will be here on Friday to help open their time capsule. We're going to film that. I'm not sure if any of them were class officers, but they, so once we reached out to them, they started reaching out through their Facebook page. And anybody who was close enough to come is going to be here. And then we're going to use that video of opening their time capsule as their, you know, on their Facebook page as part of their invitation to come to graduation.
That's a great idea.
I was only the second class.
Right.
To graduate from this high school.
Which is, which is phenomenal. And so we, I'm wondering if the time capsule tradition that seems to have restarted in 1972, the last class to not graduate from here, I'm wondering if there's something that begins to their time capsule. But I have no idea when to open the class of 72 time capsule. That's something I'll want some input on. The, when I was here, we did time capsule in eighth grade. It got opened on graduation. And then another one. As a matter of fact, Mr. Conley and I were just talking about this. They are still doing it. And in fact, this year's eighth graders have done it. And that's, that's open on Arbor Day, right? Yep.
Well, I'm happy to hear that. I really, I love the traditions. Obviously, I went here and I love that they're continued in the history and everything. At the, actually, the start of this, I guess, fourth Board of Education run, I'm thinking. I spent a bunch of time in the library and put together a whole time history of the development of our school all the way up to today that I'd love to, I don't know. Did you already share it or did I share?
I, it's going to be going on the website. We're working on that.
Okay, I was going to say, I'd love to send it to you if you are interested in reading it.
Historical history section on our website. That's a good summer project design.
Will there be a talk at work?
There will be.
Miles, that's great. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Miles.
Andrew, I don't know if I've introduced you yet.
No, I don't think so. All right, so I want to start by saying happy teacher and staff appreciation week. Very, very, very special week here in Chatham. It's a big celebration of all of our staff. I always declare it not just teacher appreciation week, but teacher and staff. So we are really working to celebrate everybody. You know, I have to say, all the goodies that I'm seeing throughout the building is pretty impressive. I know I, I'm starting a new tradition here where it was make your own trail mix, where I brought a bunch of goodies in every building, the library, transportation, and they were making their own trail mix on Monday. That's kind of how we kicked it off. And then different buildings are doing different things of appreciation. It is quite impressive. It's really exciting. And every one of our teachers and our staff really deserve this celebration. So anyone out there listening from home, please make sure you thank your teacher and your staff and anyone that works with your child because, you know, they deserve it. And I just want to take this time to say just how impressed I am with, with the quality of staff and quality of teachers, quality of administrators that we have here in Chatham. I just finished up my eighth month here and I'm just more and more impressed every single day. We are very fortunate to have such a group of dedicated educators who truly, truly care about kids. And this is every single person here, you know, bus drivers. I'm not going to, see if I name one, then I got to name them all, right? Every single person here, I'm going to say, all staff, all teachers. Just really impressive. And I feel honored to be leading this district and to be their superintendent. So thank you to all of our educators out there. So today I met with our administrative team and all of our district staff to review our updated human resources procedures. As superintendent, it's my responsibility. The human resources is a big part of my responsibility because we do not have a human resources department. So it's crucial that we are very organized in our approach of hiring and processing our applicants and processing and onboarding all of our employees. So we have very clear procedures now that I trained everyone on today. And not that we didn't have clear procedures before, but we just fine-tuned them a little bit. And it's been an opportunity this year because I'm new in my position. My administrative secretary is new. So we really wanted to really look at everything and just tweak things and make sure that we are all on the same boat. And I'm really excited that we are and we have some real great procedures written and ready to go. I also want to take this time, change. You know, I was, I've been reflecting this week on all the change that this district has endured this year. Quite, quite amazing. You know, with the new superintendent, you know, I could just keep naming all the different, different newness here. And I have to say, our faculty and staff has just embraced all this newness. And I'm really excited about the future of this district. So today I want to also introduce two new people. And I know we've already introduced one of them before, but now she officially has started and Stephanie is here. So Stephanie Carbone has officially started. She started last week. Welcome again, Stephanie, day four, day four. So we're excited to have her leadership here. We're very lucky to have her leadership here. She's still going to be working with Brian until he retires in a couple of weeks. But we're excited to have her on board. And also you are approving today our brand-new transportation supervisor. And he's somebody familiar that I think a lot of us know, and that's Wally Angle. Let's give Wally a round of applause. He's not here right now, but we're really excited to welcome on board as part of our leadership team. He'll be leading our transportation department to even greater success. And he is taking over from Josh, who resigned a couple of weeks ago. So we're really fortunate to have him. He's going to bring some great leadership to the department. So welcome onboard, Wally. So I just want to just make a quick statement about the report that we released the other day. So just a couple of days ago, we received the report from the Department of Health. So as I have shared before, due to claims of mold in our high school, the district asked the Department of Health to conduct an indoor air quality assessment of the high school. So we approached them asking for their support to make sure that our building is safe for all of our faculty and staff. And they decided to complete an indoor air quality assessment. The results came back this week and the report was posted on our website. I'm happy to report no concerns were found by the Department of Health. Previous mold testing was also conducted between the last two years. And all of this, all of these reports are also found on our website. And again, all of these reports found no evidence of mold in our school. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that student, staff, and faculty health and safety is always our number one priority. We always take this seriously and we will always follow through, which we have. So if anyone has any questions, you know, to that, they always can reach out to me or again, to the Department of Health. And the Department of Health's email address is on the website under the posting and it has the website to reach out to their department and they can answer any questions. And the last thing I wanted to say, I know we had a community member mentioned who happens to be here, asking for a garbage can in front of the library. I want to let everyone know that the garbage can was placed last, maybe almost two weeks ago at this point. And we appreciate your, you know, recommendation of that. And we're always there to support our, our community to make sure it's, it's a clean and organized place. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody have any questions?
So one comment and a question about that report that you brought up. One of the things that I found notable is that the air quality assessor's opinion is that there's not enough stuff to grow mold on in the school. There's not enough humidity in the building. There's not enough stuff for mold to grow in or on to create a mold problem in the school. So that was highlighted in the report in a few different locations. And if you did read through it, that they did note that they were, are they, are they coming back to do a second round? What's from the pilot?
So, so they are not coming back. Being part of the pilot, they are not coming back to do a second round. And the reason for that was they, they were, they were talking about possibly coming back during more of a humid time, a different season to do the exact same report. But then once we shared with them that we have air conditioning in our school and the air condition would be running, they decided that that wouldn't be necessary because that would be taking all the humidity out of the building anyways. So due to us having air condition there, they do not recommend additional testing. And I, and I just want to make note that we met with them to review everything and they were incredibly impressed with the airflow of our school and the filtration system we have. They said that they really have experienced, you know, the quality of air filters that we use are top-notch. They were really impressed with how the flow of the building was working. So that was really great to hear.
Well, we're lucky, we actually exceed. I mean, they recommend MERV 13s and we're at a MERV 14 filtration. So we exceed the standards here.
Our air handlers are relatively new. We just went through COVID, so.
And they're still set up to COVID quality. We never adjusted them after COVID, so they're really filtering that air at a rapid rate.
No, that was it for the superintendent report.
Okay, then we'll move on to Carrie's academic.
Good evening, everyone. Two quick updates for you tonight. First off with teacher leaders. I've shared with you before that on top of the teacher leaders facilitating their meetings with their teams and such, I meet with them monthly. And so for this month, we, I changed the format a little bit. And I'm in the midst of meeting with them in small groups. So we've had two of those. And the feedback was that was really good because I think when you have almost 30 folks in a room, it's a totally different dynamic than when you have five. So we're, you know, reflecting on this year, celebrating a little bit, and then also looking ahead to next year. So two meetings in have been really, really good. Always trying to improve and think of ideas for next year, how to make everything, you know, even better. But it's, it's been really great. And I, funny, Andrew said eight months. I'm pushing six months already, which blows my mind that I've been here six months already. But in that amount of time, the teacher leaders, I just have so much respect for them and the process and the work that we're doing. So it's exciting. And I think next year we'll continue to grow that. So I just wanted to share that with you. A different, different way of meeting this month, and I think it's going well. And then a couple board meetings ago, I had mentioned to you, talk about time flying. Testing was going to be coming while we're in the midst of testing. So just to give you a quick update on how all of that is going. I don't know if you heard, when the testing window first opened statewide, it was a lot of problems because the whole program got shut down and there were a lot of technological issues. We did not jump the gun and start on that day, which I think is wisdom by our principals to not do that. So since we have started the three-through-eight testing, we've had minor little technical problems, but our technology team has rectified them almost immediately. So very little to none, no problems for us, thankfully. We're 100% CBT testing, too, computer-based testing. So we've had really no issues. And any issues that did arise were, like I said, fixed immediately. Nothing was lost in information or anything like that. So that's good. Just quickly looking at all the different tests, six-through-eight ELA was done in April, 24th, 25th. So that is completed. Three-through-five math was April 29th and 30th. So that is completed. Math six, seven, and eight was April 30th and May 1st. That is completed. The science eighth grade exam was today. So that is completed, other than some makeups, likely. And then three-through-five ELA were in the midst. So that was today and tomorrow and then a brief makeup period. So the only three-through-eight tests after tomorrow that remain, well, it's just one, science five, so we're moving, you know, pretty rapidly through, through those. Again, it's amazing that we're here already, but we are. Nicest slot testing for our English language learners is going really smoothly. That's a really big window. It's open until May 23rd. Very mindful not to try to overburden, you know, the students with assessment after assessment. So that's why that window is so large. We've had no, no issues with the nicest slot test. It's going really well. Sasha mentioned AP testing has started. So I know biology, AP Euro, I think, right? Mr. Cook is, is that, we had AP Euro already? That was yesterday. And AP World is coming up. So on top of those, we have, let's see, English, English literature, US history, as Peter just mentioned, calculus and AP psychology. So AP exams are always a good stressful time for the students and a lot of preparation goes in. And if you have students taking those, then be kind to them and tell them to get some. be kind to them and tell them to get some rest this week and eat, eat breakfast and all that good stuff. But we're in the midst of that and then, of course, at the end, we'll have Regents exams. Typical Regents here, other than just a reminder that we will be giving the life science biology on June tenth. And then geometry on June eleventh, and the reason for that, the earlier administration date is this is the first administration of these new tests. So the state always asks that they do them, that you administer them earlier, just in case something strange were to happen with them. They're still rated and scored and everything at the same time as the other exams. But it gives a kind of couple of weeks grace period in case something unforeseen issues with the test or something, I don't know that. Anything's happened, one, one year with the social studies regions, first year, they canceled it because of, you know, yeah, community issues and things with the test and it had nothing to do with, you know, the students, but so there has been some, you know, reason to, to offer them early. But other than that, we are moving forward, so testing is going really, really well. Credit to our, our administration, our teachers who work really hard and, and the students too, of course, all the work that they are putting in and, and doing their best with. So that is what I have for you.
Great, Terry, does anyone have any questions?
Hi Terry, I know we spoke before the beginning of the school year about our big increase in ELL students. I'm hoping at some point, and, and now that we're going to be having these measures, these performance lab measures, do we get that back quickly or is that not till the end of the year?
The, the NICE slot scores, quicker than the three through eight scores. I'm not exactly sure when we'll have them, but it definitely does come back quicker.
The thing that I would like to have that, it's just like basic visibility of how many students are in each grade?
Yep.
And where are they, where are they benchmarking at right now?
Sure, sure.
And I, I don't really want to wait for the next academic update like next year, so.
Gotcha, no, absolutely. Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to our operational update, Michael, do you have anything to add?
Just real quick, obviously the capital project, we're still getting some quotes for the movers because they came in. The first quote came in very expensive, so I think we have four people coming in. We're going to get quotes on, you know, because we have to move everything out, it's really going to be the timing. I said this is going to be a tremendous amount of work and now that budget's finishing up, I'll be heavily involved in capital. Collier's a construction manager, did hire someone out of Albany. So they have, they have some local that's going to be on site every day, which I'm excited to meet and work hand in hand with because you know, we're going to have so, so much work to have to be done this summer. I do want to thank the maintenance crew. I, I told them they had the senior track night, our last track night, I wanted it to look, you know, excellent, the fields and the grass and everything. And then we've had rain and I was out there today and it was, they did a great job, so I want to thank them there. And I'll just, a quick shout out to, you know, I met with Hannah with C-Plaque today and been talking with the staff out there and things are going great. So I'm, I'm very happy to report that after, I think she's been here since January, so some, some good stuff going on, so.
I just had one thing that triggered my, so I wanted to talk about Muriel, about, sorry to be scary. Scheduling a facilities committee meeting, because we did meet with our architects and our engineers about the air conditioning and we do have all that information pretty much ready to go. So we need to look at dates, so if you want to maybe just email me a couple of dates, times that work and we can try to get everyone together. Or let me know after, you know, we can talk after the meeting. Okay, okay. I'll give you a couple, okay, perfect, I'll put a couple of dates. Does, does that committee usually meet after school during? Okay, that works for me, okay. And we're going to invite the architects and engineers and stuff, so we'll, so I'll, I'll give you a couple of dates first, yeah, Collier will be there. And then I'll put it out to everybody, okay? All right, so that's, and then we're going to look at the different options we have and make a, and we're going to be asking that committee for a recommendation about how to move forward with the AC. Because we have all the numbers and everything. For the, for the project here, yeah, yeah, we, we have a whole game plan. Which movers are involved, right? So yeah, we have, so I can just give you a quick reminder. The science technology room, those all need to be removed by, I think, what is it? The art room, eighteenth, eighteenth they have to be. So what we're doing is we're, we're asking, we're giving teachers a couple of hours to take their personal stuff and anything that they want to pack in boxes. And then the rest of it will be packed by movers. And then the movers for that, that whole hallway are going to take everything and put them in outdoor storage units. Because don't forget, we are still, we can't use the cafeteria because we're using that for Regents, because we're starting that project during the night shift. So that's phase one of the movement. And then phase two is going to be the six classrooms, that's going to be after the last day of the, the Regents. And then all of their supplies are going to be moved out, same thing, teachers will have a couple of hours to move their, to pack some of their personal belongings. Then movers are going to come up and box up all of their, those items, and that's all going to be stored in the cafeteria. And then we're using the gymnasium to store all the new furniture that needs to be put together that we're ordering. So all the new cabinetry, because that's going to be coming in over the summer. So the gym is going to be where all that stuff is going to be held. And then the project is underway, it's going to be a big year, big year for that project. The AC project, that will not happen until next school year, just because we have to deal with this project.
Natasha?
They're slow.
Yeah, so I'm going to be involved in that now because I know it's been raining and we have some AP exams, we didn't want anyone working out here, but we, the, the EPHIS works, they are putting that up. But I, I would like to see that move along quicker and I want to get the metal, I want to seal this stuff up. We need to, we need to finish that soon, so I will be talking with them Wednesday to push that along.
And they usually have like one or two people working, I talked, Mike and I talked to, they need to get moving on this, like it's taken way too long. They're not sending a very large group to be doing it, it's a little, little too.
They, they haven't had people here on and off like most of the school year, right?
Well, they've really been, there's been somebody here most days, but it's only one or two people. And they, they started that back up in April, I would say, but now we're getting to. Okay, I, I'm, I'm seeing like one or two pieces a day going up, we need to get moving on it. That's just my opinion, but.
All right, so we're going to move on to our board committee reports, policy committee.
Okay, so this is a big wrap up meeting on April thirtieth that we had. I, I am going to put together a little like policy year in review for the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five season, so you guys can all see it laid out and have it in the public portion of board docs for the community as well. We did eighteen policies this year, we rewrote and updated all the charters, we redid an entire handbook. And so this is the wrap up for the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five NISBA recommended updates that we pseudo ignored while we were trying to do the entire manual overhaul to get it ready for the NISBA transfer that finally occurred in September-ish. Okay, at the, at the fall, in the fall. So tonight I brought a lot of policies and this is because I want to be able to pass to the next policy chair. Anything going forward that would be from that April NISBA update, they'll have the April and the July NISBA update when they start in September to update. And I do have a spreadsheet, I don't know if anyone checks out policy committee drive once in a while, it's really fun on there. But anyway, I do have a whole spreadsheet and write up for everything that we did and what will need to be addressed. Possibly in the coming months. April thirtieth, we are anticipating was our last for the school year, but if anything comes out, comes from NISBA, we're kind of waiting on like a cell phone policy that might be popping up here and there. We will meet another time and I'm sure it'll be probably near the end, we'll give you the update on that if, if that's necessary. So I'm just going to go through the list that we have tonight and kind of give you the quick and dirty of each one of what we needed to do at the last policy meeting. Under new policies for first reading, you're going to see one eleven R, which is the required sexual harassment grievances under Title IX. And the one eleven E, which is the sexual harassment grievances under Title IX definitions of exhibit. Currently, both those are required. Currently in our manual is one ten, which is the sexual harassment grievances, which is like the overarching policy, which is not required. And the sexual harassment in the student population, which is one ten point one, which is also not required. We also have one ten point two, which is the sexual harassment in the workplace, which is a required one. So what has happened in the last, less than a year, but, yeah. In the last few months here is one eleven, the one elevens are now the required ones. And they have become the overarching encompassing, encompassing ones that kind of are everything under Title IX. So they've swept up one ten and they swept up one ten point one. They are extremely comprehensive and the ones that you're seeing tonight, both the required and the exhibit are for the most part, the, the only modifications we made to make them local. We're putting in, you know, our like, our local titles for who you would escalate something to for grievances and just little things like that. Otherwise, it's, it's pretty much the legalese that we, we took in NISBA recommendations for these. You're going to have a first reading on the two one elevens tonight. On May twentieth, you're going to have the second and final reading of the one elevens. And then we'll rescind the unrequired one tens, because they will be duplicating portions of the one elevens. Everyone follows that, the left, the one elevens will be the comprehensive ones and the required ones going forward. Eighty three thirteen is also required, it is a new policy, it's the extreme heat condition days. This one, again, we took mostly the recommendations, I'd say. And updated to local who does what titles and little procedures. And I believe Andrew has also already met with Needham for writing the actual procedures that will follow the policy. And will be in place as of May twentieth, right, when we do the second and final reading. So we do have procedures in place that will buttress this policy. Another new one that you're seeing tonight is twenty two forty five, which is also required. And it is the ex officio student member of the board. We were head of the bar on this because we have a student of the board, but there were some school districts that don't. The main thing, I guess, to notice in this, that we customize to Chatham, we, we took most of their recommendation. But in their specific, how they elect, how they pick the next student board representative is how Sasha mentioned tonight, that they will hold, they will hold applications and they will hold an interview process. And it'll be facilitated through the student government. So that is what is, is customized within this policy. To reflect what local practice is. And I assume they have their own procedures already written up. Eleven twenty, okay, so there's a, a couple of these. Eleven twenty R, which is school district records, we were missing and it's a required one. I don't know how we missed this, I almost feel like there was some kind of uploading error because I would have sworn we had it. You will see though, when we go to our policy right now, there is a eleven twenty R. But that's the regulation, it is not the overarching required policy. So you are adopting tonight eleven twenty R, which it appears we have, but we don't, it's mistitled in our manual right now. So eleven twenty R is the school district records. You will also see first readings for fifty five hundred. And we have RR, which is going to be our local naming convention for, to just distinguish the regulations from the required. Since clearly we seem to be having a miscommunication on which ones are required, which ones are regulations. So the R will, will denote that it is a required policy, while the RR will denote that it is a regulation, okay? Now, these, the suited records regulation, which is fifty five hundred RR, which is the regulation and the information and data privacy security breach and notification regulation, which is eighty six thirty five. Are actually not new, but what we discovered is that they were kind of hidden within fifty five hundred and eighty six thirty five effectively. They were, they were matched within the policy as attachments. And I had a, I was trying to figure out like, why do we have attachments onto this policy? And it turned out they were the regulations. So to distinguish them as regulations and since they're also required. It's just easier for how, how we look it up and we denote that yes, we have these, the required, and these are regulations, but we also have the required policy as well. We decided to just adopt them as separate policies within that. So we already have this content in our manual, but now we're having it retitled to be a standalone, so that you know it's a regulation. For the updated policies for first reason, uh, readings, we have one ten point two, which is required. And that's the sexual harassment in the workplace, which we also currently have. This was just touched up with some, some minor verbiage and ensuring that we had the proper titles in place that we reference and that are local to Chatham. Fifty two fifty one, fund drives, have you guys enjoyed seeing this for the fifth time on this agenda? I think we've gotten it right this time. So just to recap, we've been having some concerns with the processes of how fundraisers are approved and facilitated here at Chatham. We had obviously a, a fall issue with a fundraiser that we were concerned had some data privacy issues. That students have been asked to use their personal cell phone devices, just some things that we wanted to tidy up. And that's why we keep having this on here, to make sure that it's clearly articulated and everyone understands what the procedures are. So you will notice that under fundraising by students for the benefit of student programs extracurricular activities, the fourth and fifth paragraphs are new. And so what was added, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Ann, Mary Ann was the lead on this. Digital fundraising platforms must be compliant with New York State Education Law two D and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. See policy eighty six thirty five R, information and data privacy security protection notification. Parents will be given the discretion to opt in for a student's personal mobile device to be utilized for the fundraising campaign. Alternative options should be provided. So it should not be necessary for a child to have a mobile device in order to participate in the fundraising, but nor should they be obligated to, even if they do have a mobile device. Alternative options should be provided and it's, it's really the discretion of the parents that needs to be verified. Also, district staff initiating the fundraiser are solely responsible for providing the information and details of the fundraiser. Outside sales representatives are prohibited from marketing directly to students. This was also an issue that third parties were coming onto campus and marketing directly to students. And we wanted to make sure that that stays going forward. So those are the two main updates with it.
The other was, I, I, as a superintendent, I'm approving them, in the past, the principals were able to approve them too, so I will be approving, that's another big change.
Yes, and so everything will be funneled through Andrew, and I believe that's noted, isn't that noted in the first paragraph, first paragraph?
It used to say supervisor or superintendent, now it's superintendent.
Yeah, so it, it's just updated, the superintendent will approve all such fund drives to reduce the number being conducted simultaneously. And that's the second sentence of the first paragraph.
And I will be sending, once you all approve this, I'll be sending this to all faculty and staff and doing a kind of a synopsis of it and answering any questions about it. So that way everyone knows about the changes. Once you approve it.
Okay, so the next one is eleven twenty RR, school district records regulation. There are no updates to the content of it, there are updates to the title, because as I previously, previously mentioned, we had it mistitled and thought it was the required policy when it was actually the regulation. So we are just correcting the title to reflect it accurately. The, the updated policies, so I included fifty five hundred R student records, fifty five fifty R student privacy and eighty six thirty five R information. 5550R, student privacy, and 8635R, information and data privacy, security breach and notification. Again, these aren't new policies and there's nothing new to the content except that we took out that attachment, what was listed as attachment, and have made it a separate regulation that we were adopting under the first heading, which are the new policies that you're adopting tonight. So any questions, everybody clear on some of how we rearrange that? I've seen that.
Yeah, I mean, so we're folding up the, I think it's great that we're folding up those sexual harassment policies because it was a mess before, there were like three different interacting policies. I'm worried that there's a gap. And I'm not sure, it's specifically around the students. So there was, the way it was previously written, what I understood was that if the students reported sexual harassment, that they were entitled to some of the protections in the sexual harassment policy. Now it's being, going to be folded up into the bullying policy, I think. And it's simpler and it's, I'm not sure it's appropriate. So, but I haven't had time to analyze it in detail. So I guess the question is, did anyone look at that specific thing?
That, I mean, it's going to be under the sexual harassment grievances of Title IX?
No, that's only for employees.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, that's a problem.
I feel like it's not. I feel like we went through this.
Maybe the question for legal. I guess the question would be, does Title IX protect students or only? I know it protects them from discrimination, but does it protect them in the case of like an investigation and an incident?
So typically, the student aspect of it goes through DASSA, which is a New York State regulation. So they are different. And Title IX, you're right, typically is for adults. And it's typically, yeah.
But we went out of our way to create some procedures there because there weren't any. There was no reporting process. There was no requirement to follow a process.
You mean for like DASSA type incidents?
Yeah, well, it was the same thing as all other bullying,
Sure.
which I didn't think was appropriate at the time.
Yeah.
So I think that there's a, there's a, I mean, when anything edges on criminal, it's concerning. But I have a specific concern about that. So I don't know what the answer is, other than as long as someone thinks through that process.
Sure, sure. And one thing that we're doing too is we have very clear procedures that we developed out of this Title IX policy that's going on our website. So on our website, after you all approve the Title IX update, there's going to be a section on the website that is going to say Title IX. In my past district, we had something similar for DASSA type incidents for student issues. And I would be more than happy to put those procedures and do another link for that.
Yep, yep. That's the piece that was missing.
And we had a similar question at my last district. So we, when I developed the Title IX, we also had something very similar for DASSA.
There is a DASSA write-up, but it's not intended for that type of situation. It's the easy problem.
Yeah, DASSA is where most of those end up. And that's a New York State regulation, DASSA.
Right, but our policy there is really simple.
Yeah, I mean, it's so simple. It just says refer to policy 110.
Well, it does say that.
That's the DASSA one?
Or no, for, you're saying for the sexual harassment of students?
There is a section where it says, oh, well, the accuser and the accused will be notified of what the investigation. But it doesn't say, well, there's going to be an investigation. It's going to be formulaic. There's going to be a written report. It doesn't, the normal stuff that's in Title IX is all skipped over. So if we can solve that.
Yeah, we can definitely, that would be a procedure. Yeah, we can, I can both definitely.
Awesome.
I did that in my last district too. Well, and what I did, just so board members know, it was similar to, we took, what I did is I took what Title IX's recommendations were for the website and I kind of mimicked it with DASSA law. And then we have the DASSA information on there rather than Title IX. So they were, so this is where, and the nice thing to have that on your website, so say if we ever have a report, we would refer people to the website. Here's the Title IX section. Say if we had a parent concern and they wanted to make a report, we would refer them to the DASSA section and they can complete all the information there. So it's all organized right there. So that would be totally fine.
I think that would be great and helpful and everything. But I just want to make clear that literally sexual harassment of students, 110.1, says refer to policy 110. Like that's.
Oh, yeah, no, but I thought you said we were going to be revoking the 110s because we won't need them anymore.
No, we're revoking them except for the one that's required, which is 110.2, which is actually the sexual harassment of employees. Sexual harassment with 110, which is not required. I mean, it's one paragraph.
There was a paragraph in there that collect, like, that pulled the student reports into the same reporting process that an employee would be under. And if we're getting rid of that, I'm okay if we solve it procedurally. Policies are fine.
I mean, it looks like we'll solve it procedurally because right now it doesn't look like it.
The big concern that I have is if someone has an issue, what are they supposed to do? If they're not comfortable talking to someone, first thing they're going to do is hop on Google and there better be an answer, like on our website, someplace, better say what they're supposed to do.
Well, it sounds like he'll take care of that.
We can definitely clean that up, for sure.
The second one's easier. The, I don't know what changed in the cyber policy, but the.
No, nothing.
Well, why are we reading nothing?
Okay, because there was that regulation that was, it was listed as an attachment. So like if you were reading the policy, all of a sudden it just said attachment. And then it started, you know, the regulation, but it didn't identify itself as a regulation. So at first we thought we were missing the regulation, but it turned out we had it. It was just listed as an attachment to the policy.
All right, so the, I guess the, I'm going to try to get this right, the 8635R, not the RR.
Right.
Just because I happened to pull it up. The second sentence recognizes NIST cybersecurity framework 1.1, which is now deprecated. It's now version two.
Okay.
2.0.
Good catch.
Then I would imagine this was going to be sending us an update.
So version.
They'll get around to it.
It's the first, it's the first paragraph, okay.
Yeah, but they, you know, they might take years to do that, but.
That regulation was dated April 2024.
I guess they just adopted last year, wasn't it?
The standard came out in February, so they probably just didn't realize. But now we're more than a year in. The, we adopted this like a few years ago.
No, this one, I thought that this was part of, we must have redone it in June because it would have been part of the April.
We might have redone it then, but it was a new policy just a few years ago.
Oh, okay.
And we haven't had a board presentation on cyber since. And the reason we picked it up as an issue was because during COVID, we actually had like, we ended up spending a lot of money because we had some major like issues going on because we were switching over from educational aid to critical infrastructure on all of our technology. And it just wasn't enough to stop and we had to do some stuff. And I guess at some point, I'd like to get a report on that, but I have no specific urgency on it, other than it hasn't happened in years.
So speaking to that, ironically, we received an audit for our cybersecurity, which I've had one of those before and it actually helps us really look at every single thing. And right now it's more of a checklist slash survey. So we just gave, we just looked at that. We gave, I gave that to Mike. And it's interesting, we had to reach out to New York State and they said, and they said they are, they cannot answer any of our questions now until June because they are shorthanded. So that will be coming, that survey will be coming. And I think it's going to help us with that. So it might take us a little bit more, but we are, we are working on that. And I want to use that survey from the state as a tool to look at all of our cybersecurity.
Yeah, and direct IT spending really is the thing. It should be focusing your investments, which problems with security don't usually end up being security spending.
Yeah.
They end up being IT spending.
Okay. And this kind of stuff is looking at passwords, the way we use passwords, the way we, you know, the logistics of how we go about business, business, and is it secure? And are we, are we opening up anything that could create a problem to get someone into our systems? So I don't know if it goes into that much detail, like you're asking for, probably not.
Our policy was NIST CSF 1.1, which would have been sufficient depth. 2.0 would be great because that one's really old. But it's the same thing. It's a list. Do it on the list, say what you have, you don't have. Hopefully someone actually didn't make it up.
Yeah.
And then you know where you're at.
Yeah, well, I'll.
And then no one gets everything. So it's just a matter of, hopefully you'll have someone from Questar or someone appropriate looking at your answers and saying, this is where you should be. You're in a great place. You need to move in this direction, something like that.
It's like a featured agenda item on the whole, not just the logistics of what you have.
It could be a 15-minute report. I'm not asking for something. Just, we haven't really had a pointed conversation there. We have a policy that's been here for a few years and it says we're supposed to do that annually.
The audit is a really, I can tell you, from past experience, was incredibly helpful to look at the whole system. And we made a lot of good changes because of it. So as much as I don't like to see audits, I kind of was like, okay, this is going to help us. We have some support to get there.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I just wanted to point out that the extreme heat policy is, it doesn't start until September 1st. So whatever we're deciding to do here, that policy does not go into effect. It's brand new from New York State.
It's based, I mean, I saw the policies, which match what the state regs are going to be. It's not going to change much for us, except for in a couple of days a year, maybe.
Yep, that 88-degree mark is when it gets a little tricky. Could I mention one other thing? I just wanted to mention the cellphone policy that's very forthcoming. This is coming, it is coming. Sort of, kind of, it depends on what the words on the policy say. I'm really waiting, so it's kind of, you know, that has been one of, it's been debatable amongst our legislatures and our governor. So this is one of the reasons why we still don't have a budget yet, because they're trying to figure that out. I'm really curious to see how specific it's going to be because what it's saying is that cell phones cannot be on a student at all throughout the day. That includes lunch hallway. So that means we need to create a location or a space for them to put their phones. So that is what we're not, right now, we're ahead of it by saying they can't have them out, but kids mostly have them in their pockets right now or in their backpacks. So that, as far as I know, from what I'm hearing, that no longer will be permissible in schools. So that is going to be a big change. And I don't know what that means, so we're waiting for the language to see. It's kind of wait, it's kind of a waiting game right now. I mean, we need that really quickly because if we need to purchase something, which I'm hoping we don't, we need to be thinking about that. I'm hoping that if we can't have it, if the kids can't have it on them, they're going to have to put them in their locker. So we're not purchasing something. But this is going to be kind of controversial with kids and probably many parents. But it's a state, it's a state initiative. I can tell you, as a superintendent and our superintendent organization, we lobby very hard for flexibility because we are seeing significant issues or distractions with cell phones, you know, the ones that we do. The administrative team addresses them. Kids are pretty good with not having them out during classes. But our hands are going to be tied with that. So even though we're not having major issues, now some districts really are more loose already, some are more strict already. But our hands are going to be tied with that. So we're going to have to follow what that policy says and make some procedures in place. So I'm really anxiously awaiting that, that to come out hopefully soon. And then we'll have a policy committee meeting and go from there. But I just wanted to make sure people understand that this is not, it's not going anywhere and it is coming.
Public library advisory committee.
Short report. Had a meeting today. Number one, we got the trash can back out in front of the library. Number, we have many programs coming up at the library. It's such an active place. And there are many, many programs and they're all listed on our website. A big one that some of you may be interested in, the Gant Band will be there on July 2nd at 6:30. That's probably one of the biggest things that they have. Our positions in the library are completely filled now. Staff has settled in. We now have a full-time staff member on Saturday, which is a knowledgeable staff member on Saturday. And that's been a big asset to our library. And that's, we have a classical trio in September because you can see all of these things. There's pages of programs that this library does. And so I encourage you to go to the website and take a look at what they're doing.
And they've been sending emails out. We've been getting emails too, which is great.
Yep. And that's, and that's it. That's it for the library. Oh, we did a, we're working, worked on the evaluation of the director today. Went very well. I will not comment on that. It was in the executive session, went very well. That's it for me. Thank you, Mary Ann.
And one thing, Mary Ann, we're trying to really utilize the relationship between the school and the library. So one thing that we talked about at CPLAC is utilizing our email systems, right? We're part of the district, so that's why you're seeing those going out on a monthly basis now. All parents are getting those.
Okay, the district safety committee.
So we had a great meeting. You know, one thing that really, one thing that really impresses me is the amount of people that come to this group and the amount of stakeholders from the community that we have. We have, you know, we have people representing from every single community safety group you can imagine. From our fire department, from our sheriffs, from the troopers, from our ambulance services, you know, you name it. And it's just a great way to review what we're doing and for people to really give their expertise in there. And because of that, we have some great conversations. And it's more kind of an open approach as we go through the agenda item. We always ask for the experts for their opinion and they give their opinion and we have some really great ideas that come out. So, you know, in this meeting, we really, we really highlighted several things. One piece was our, you know, the confirmation of our threat assessment teams. We discussed that, everybody was trained on that. We are, we have some suicide prevention training coming as well from the district. We spent a lot of time talking about our relocation drills that are going to be coming up on the 28th. We did a trial run with all of our teachers last week. So all of our teachers went to the sites to preview them. And then we reviewed some of those protocols. We, and again, you know, we talk about these things and then our amazing community members, you know, give their expertise and help us make it better during these meetings. We spent a lot of time talking about lockdown drills. Again, you know, some things came up from the experts giving us recommendations and follow-through. So we talked about lockdowns. We have two lockdowns coming up over the next, over the next couple of months. I will be, I will be letting parents know when those lockdowns are and parents know when the relocation drill is. So that will be coming through a district email as we get closer to them. So yeah, really great conversations, you know, to really make our community a safer place. Anything else, Mary Ann, that?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, so we'll move on to the wellness committee. It's still your turn.
All right, it's another superintendent committee. So I'm not allowed to report on this, but I do want to let everyone know that just like Terry and Linda reported, that their survey went out to faculty and staff and they got a pretty good response. Our survey went out to students, so we had over 400 student responses. Pretty impressive, right? 400. So what we did is we asked English teachers at the high school to give them out and we asked our middle school teachers, social studies teachers to give them out. And we got a really great, not everyone did them, but we weren't expecting that. But we got a really good turnout. So the tricky part with this is a lot of them were narratives, short narratives, like short answer type questions, because we wanted, we didn't want to pinpoint the questions, you know, we wanted the kids to be able to say what they wanted to say, so they were more open-ended. So it's going to take us a bit to review all of this data and to review it as a team. So we're in the process of doing that. And the goal is that at our next meeting, which is the end of this month, I think the 25th, around there, end of the month, we're going to spend half of the time in our small groups. We'll actually start with our small groups. And we can look at the data again and talk about it. And then we'll kind of review with everybody. And then the goal of this data is that we're going to, this is what's going to build our goals for the next school year committee. And then next school year, we're going to be developing ideas and activities and support to help support based on what the kids and the faculty and staff gave us. So this was kind of an organizational year, kind of a reboot restart year. But now we have some great data, lots of data, that will help us make some good decisions and develop some great things for next year.
Linda, did you have anything you wanted to add?
The only thing I'd add is to repeat at our subcommittee, the staff that was there and the parents and everyone were really interested in the board being involved in terms of attendance, perhaps at the end of the year celebration. They'd like to see us more at those particular things. And I think, Andrew, you had mentioned there is something planned for the end of the year. So we'll be getting some information on that. information on that.
Yes, I'll give you guys a date, hopefully very soon. It'll be probably the last day of school.
All right, that's great. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to old business. R eighty five, be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the contract with the Center for Disability Services Incorporated for two students to attend the Langin School for the upcoming school year, including the current fiscal year's summer extension program at the rate approved by the Commissioner of Education and the Director of the New York State Division of the Budget and authorized the superintendent to sign the agreement. Can I have a motion? Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, does anyone remember what we, we had for last year? For two, two students? I don't think you'll remember, but I believe it's the same as last year. I don't think there's any additions. These are the same students that were there last year. Yeah. And what we're doing is we're, we're going to give them all two as they come. I don't know if you've done it. Did you do them all at the same time? They all come.
No, no, no.
Okay, because they all come at different times. I would rather not hold them. So you'll see these. This is for next year. Some, some of these groups give them to us early, some give it to us very late. So you'll be getting them as they come in.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? So move. Okay, so our new business discussion, these are the list of all the policies that we discussed, our first reading. Doesn't really have a motion. It doesn't. Now, there is no motion.
No, they're just going in public record.
Okay. Yeah, any comments? Okay. L, new business finance, R eighty six, be it resolved, that the Board of Education approved the MOA with the CSCE dated April twenty eighth, twenty twenty, December, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, that's what it says.
It's just April.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion? Does anyone have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
I just wanted to thank our um CSCE organization for um, you know, the good negotiations that we had on on the updates to their contract. So um, was really pleased to work with that group.
All right, M, consensus agenda, R eighty seven, be it resolved, the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda, M through O as written. Can I have a motion? Does anyone have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Okay, so items for future agenda, did anyone want to, um, we have just the one.
I already gave you two.
Right, you gave us two. Okay, so now we're at second public comment. Does anyone want to speak?
Good evening. Again, congratulations on the budget going forward. I look forward to voting yes for that on uh voting day. Uh, the next thing I just want to prepare everybody for is when the time capsules are open, it's almost going to be like the 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 scene in The Shining where Jack Nicholson is in the photo. Name the Board of Education member who was in the seat for both of those classes. Fifty years ago, Muriel, you were on the Board of Education also. All right, then moving on, um, I, I had a little bit of a flashback to COVID and the conspiracy theories of when you had your report on mold. You have a wonderful opportunity because I know you're a caring board and a caring administration and that the whole team is caring. But there are some people lined up on another side, and I think you could tell from the presentation that the district is hiding something, that the district doesn't care about its people, that, so I don't have, I wish I could push the button for you on how to fix that, but I would argue, please, don't put that in the old folder quite yet. Please try to use that experience and be good listeners on continuing to advance really transparent and excellent communications. Because something like that is going to come along again next month, next year, two years from now, et cetera. So the more the community and your employees know that you care about them and you're listening and that they're being pulled in, the better for the whole community. I want to address the two point two million dollar uh item in the upcoming budget for transportation. Mike mentioned that there's a consultant that's going to be coming in to look at stuff. I want to remind the board, well, let me first say, I hope included in that, the board takes a hard look at the one mile versus one and a half mile transportation that you provide in this district. You made a lot of hard decisions on cuts. So I'm going to ask you to please give the same kind of thought to, yes, we'd love to continue the one mile, but if the state mandate is one and a half miles, what dollar amount would that save? That is, that is something I think everybody in your community would think your due diligence is to look at. So then the second thing off of that is again, I appreciate a consultant being brought in to get some expertise in addition to the great team that's here and out in the field. But the other one is for buildings, you know, decreasing enrollment, decreasing enrollment, decreasing enrollment. So I know there's a lot of antenna up on should we maybe downsize infrastructure? But please don't kick the can on this thing, you know, when? When is that going to appear on agenda to start having a conversation? And if you need to bring in consultants, when is that going to happen? You'll be summer coming up where students are going to be off campus. That is a time to really buckle down and figure out how we're going to answer the mail for your community. And the answer may be, we stay with three buildings for the following reasons. But you're going to have answers for the community and where you're not just saying, well, we didn't get around to looking at it. Thank you very much.
Well, that concludes, we are going to go into executive session tonight, hopefully briefly before the skies open up. I brought my umbrella because there's going to be downpours coming. So we are moving into executive session uh for collective negotiations in the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Can I have a motion? Does anyone have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And we do not anticipate coming back in the open session. Good night, everyone. Oh, that's right, that's right. Can I have a motion to appoint Andrew Court? The district clerk probed him. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.